Had sent a reminder, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I sent them the link.
Brian has to do a morning mass.
Looks like Ed's arriving. There he is.
Yeah, good morning. Right, well, we've got most of the gang here. I'm not sure how many other RCPs you had. They're one at a, but it's that time, so let's go ahead and get started, Brian.
Sure. I don't know, Winetta, I'm not showing it on my presentation on the screen. Do I?
There you go. It's up there now.
All right, very good. Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate you listening in this morning. As you may recall, oh, gosh, about a year ago, I was invited to participate and help Terry and the team put together a food security study. And as you may recall, we kind of put it on the back burner for a little while until we we were comfortable re-tackling it. But in the process, I think a lot of us forgot what perhaps was presented and said. So this is sort of an effort to revisit some of the older presentations that we had last year. And in doing so, if you want to go to the title, the next slide, Winetta. So basically, what we're going to talk about today is briefly outline what the goal was, the measure of success, the scope of studies. I offer a few key questions, but when we get to that, you know, there is some room for discussion, but we're going to try to try to keep that part short. And then we'll very quickly run through some summaries or these summaries of most of the presenters. I haven't, I was not able to include, or I did not include at this point, the last discussion from the Port Authority. And indeed, we will have additional speakers, you know, during the summer. So this list will be added to and will be, those speakers will be incorporated, obviously, after they they're finished. But essentially, and you'll have to, I'll have to apologize now. A lot of the audio was a little hard to hear, so I may have misspelled names or, you know, perhaps missed a few things, but I think I got the gist of what we're trying to do. And then what's not shown here on the table of contents are the last two items that we'll, we're really probably going to focus mostly on today. And that is the common themes that, you know, we that we found as a result of all the speakers. Many things were repeated over and over. And so I tried to zero in on some of those things. And then the last thing, which I did not unfortunately include in this version on the table of contents, is the is the final piece, and that's the policy discussions. And I, you'll see, but I offer a few, but those are my personal, you know, policy ideas that I came up with. Certainly, I'm not trying to influence anybody. So that's, you know, that's a discussion that we should all have to try to try to determine. So, Winetta, can we move on to the next slide? Briefly, measures, a measure of success. This is basically a restatement from the board. This is, this was the direction that we were given. And basically, you know, it's all self-explanatory. Identify strategies. You know, get people, stakeholders involved that will promote, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. Implement risk reduction policies. And try to try to help the state develop sustainable programs for food. And by the way, please, if you if you see something that you're not comfortable with, or you want to make a comment, interject at any time. All right, Winetta, next slide. Scope of study. Again, this is a sort of a repeat of what the board had provided, sort of giving us, you know, some some goals to pursue. But essentially, you know, it's develop definitions, suggest methods to communicate and track, you know, improvements to to the to the suggestions. Utilize all the research that we have available, speakers, you know, various resources, university, Alaska Village Initiative, those things are being done. And then identify and track programs, policies, you know, groups and efforts that are trying to reduce food secure or improve food security and create sustainability. And then probably don't even need to include those, but I threw in a couple of examples, micro grants and and job opportunity programs. Any thoughts on this slide? Okay, Winetta, next one? Okay, again, these are some key questions to be addressed. I, you know, of course, we invite other idea, other questions, but these, I kind of, I kind of included just to stimulate discussion. Obviously, you know, the key one is, is what is food security and what its definition is? And we're still, I think, grappling with that, you know, what what we believe our definition should be. Obviously, you know, as you'll see in some of the later presentations, we've got definitions from the Inupiaq community, we've got definitions from, you know, the feds, we've got definitions from the state. So ultimately, you know, that's something that we will want to want to narrow down, I think, and try to come up with our, either our own definition or a definition that we're comfortable with. Terry, I can't hear you. Can you turn on your microphone? Terry, I think, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question for you. Did you get a chance to review that Harvard study that that me sent around to a couple of us?
I don't, if it was, if it was part of the material that we've had
No, this is in the last
a while that I've read it, but no.
Just in the last two weeks. I haven't gotten to it yet, but I wanted to, if anybody has, I'd be curious to know what their, you know, what their thoughts are relative to some of these. But we'll have to make sure that the group gets it. I'll send it to, Winetta, if we haven't posted that, I'll send it over to you and we can post it so we can all get a chance to review it.
Is that part of like the circumpolar conference or what, Arctic?
This was a, this was a, this was a special report that was done through Harvard regarding food security. And that's, that's as far as I got into it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Terry and Brian, this is Jody.
Hi, Jody.
Hey, um, just really quick. I, I think that that would be a really valuable document for all of us to read. And I appreciate, Terry, you getting it out to all of us or, or Winetta, please, that would be great. I think that my biggest struggle with this entire conversation, the last year and a half or so, has been this amorphous term food security that we can't seem to, if we allow it to be as big as it can be, we're never going to come up with any direction that we can move forward on. So I feel like spending time on defining what it is we're trying to be working on is critical. And maybe the terminology food security isn't the right term. But I just feel like we've we've got such a diverse background of, if you guys, you know, if you look over the presenters that we've had in the last, you know, multiple months, they've been excellent and incredibly diverse and very focused on their perspective. But I don't feel, at least my grasping of everything, I really don't feel like we've been able to nail down the jello to the wall and really give a definition of food security. And do we really want to define something that has a different definition for urban versus rural? I don't, I don't think we really need to split it. I think that there's a way that we could come up with a concept that covers the state of Alaska and not divide us between based on where we live or how we get to work each day.
Right. Well, Jody, that, those are great points. And I can tell you that what you saw out of the out of the speakers is a couple of things. One is the, those folks that were willing to talk first. And what was more, I think, telling to those of us that started this in the very beginning was those that we couldn't get to the table very easily and for a variety of reasons. And so, but to your point, that is exactly, I think, where we are, is, is we are defining and making recommendations for broad public policy for all Alaskans. And so the question really is, is, is if you, if you start slicing things too finely, don't you get off the rails? And we, we see that in our discussion groups as well. And so to your point, I, that I think you're going to see things gel very quickly from this point because part of that, the study groups and the, and the takeoffs are that if you try, and this is one man's opinion, if you try to start cutting it and defining, okay, how do we segregate? How do we compartmentalize? Then you automatically polarize the discussion. And then it's a, you jump into that scarcity model, right, which we saw already in the last couple of months, right? And that's, and that's a new term that, that's also being brought forward is that, that if you deliver or if there's a perception of scarcity, whether it's real or not, the fact is that people will hoard, right? And the discussion when we're studying policy is the same because you're already going into that realm of, I need to get mine. So thank you for that. Yeah.
And I echo your sentiments, Jody. This, this is, you know, the more you get into this, the more overwhelming it really becomes because, you know, you're, you're trying to, you know, think on behalf of, you know, the Department of Homeland Security, the, you know, the, the, the military, the, you know, various food agencies, the government, politicians, I mean, you're almost trying to, trying to, you know, take on the world and encapsulate it and try to come up with a recommendation. In fact, the way I'm, you know, I've kind of observed, it's, you know, we started at 30,000 feet. We really need to almost get up to 100,000 feet instead of narrowing down because it is really so all encompassing. And but, but as we get to the end, you will find, you know, from, from what I, at least what I've elucidated, that there are about 10 to 15 really common themes that keep, you know, coming up in each speaker or various speakers. And it is starting to kind of at least get to the heart of what at least many of us have expressed are important ideas. So we'll see as we get towards the end, maybe, maybe we'll, we'll develop some clarity. With the national Back in, jumping back in. So, yeah, you know, this, this
Hey, Brian.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Preston, I just wanted to give a thought.
There was just one thing with all the national dialogue right now. Is there an equity lens or question that needs to be put on this as well?
An equity lens?
In terms of racial disparity and so forth, we have urban, urban, rural, but, and we have the Alaska Native and other Alaskans, but there's quite a bit of difference based on social determinants in terms of food security within the population and access. So that's one lens I didn't see in here as a question. So that'll likely come up as we get into any policy debates, just because what's been going on over the last couple of months.
I don't want to speak for Terry and the board, but I think we purposely are trying to avoid any, anything that draws us into, you know, subsistence or anything that, you know, relates too much to rural, urban divide. I mean, ideally, in my opinion, we will avoid, you know, avoid that as much as possible.
In terms of racial disparities and access within Alaska.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, so we have, we have 20 of them. Out of the 20 top zip codes of diversity in the United States, 10 of those are in Anchorage, for example.
And to your point, Preston, yes, the answer is that, that the equity lens is, has to be included in the, in the discussion and recommendations of some sort, however they're characterized. But again, keeping that, that focus that, hey, we're really just trying to, trying to get resources aligned to focus on the topic because there's been no leadership for many, many years. And so really, now the question is, is how do we start that discussion and align the resources and give a kind of a mandate that we can give the legislature, give to the governor and saying, this is what we need to start getting our arms around this very complex topic.
Right. Well, thank you.
Terry, can I just jump in for a quick housekeeping issue? We've had a couple of folks join us on the phone. And I'm wondering if you could just identify yourselves, just for everybody's benefit. Can we start with the phone number ending in 061?
Could be my dad.
Oh.
3600, I won't say it.
Okay.
He probably doesn't know how to turn.
I've unmuted you. Who's on, who's on the phone number ending 061?
Yeah, this is Dave Shady.
Say it again, please.
This is Dave Shady, Director of Mag.
Oh, thank you, Dave. And who's ending 946? We've unmuted you. Go ahead. Could you identify yourself at phone number ending 946? Okay, we'll continue. Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah. Well, so anyway, moving on to, I guess, our second bullet point. We're on some key questions to be addressed. This, this second bullet point essentially is focusing on, you know, legislation and so forth. You know, basic legislation for structural resources required to maximize, optimize production of agriculture in the state. And then we move on to the, you know, the role of the feds, local state, and how we can, we can actually come up with a comprehensive coordinated process or plan to tie all these groups together. And then the last bullet, second to last bullet, what are the contingencies in the event of an actual catastrophic event? Do we fully have, fully have all the information that we need? Okay, Winetta, next slide, please. All right. So now we just, we start jumping into the summaries. And again, I, you know, I sincerely apologize to any of the speakers if I have missed something that was very important to you, but I tried my best to capture the essence. And then I went back and tried to highlight what, at least I took, took away as some of the, the speaker's key, key points. So for instance, with regard to the farm, you know, the Farm Bureau, the focus was on what they do and developing policy, regulatory, capital, infrastructure, education awareness, et cetera. But as you can see, I tried to highlight some of the key takeaways, and I tried to capture them at the end of the presentation. So it's probably not that important that we go through each of these summaries right now in depth because what I've got in, in yellow for each of these speakers, again, is going to be captured at the end of the presentation. So.
Hey, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Just a note, as what we appreciate all the work is this, you know, monumental task, bringing everything forward. So first, thank you. What I invite everybody to do is, as we, I think Brian has dedicated two slides, maybe three, but two slides for each general topic, I believe, or speaker. And so as you use these working notes, we'll call them, feel free to email myself, Winetta, or any of the other co-chairs, thoughts and topics that you would, that you want to bring forward so that we can make sure that those are incorporated in the outline that we're going to be starting to draft in another month or so as we kind of gel this together. So just want to kind of use that as, as these working notes so that we can use them as a resource. Thank you.
So if it's, if it's amenable to everyone, you know, Winetta, if you want to just maybe slowly roll through these, these, the next 15, 20 slides of the speakers, just so people can kind of see what I have highlighted, we can just kind of go through. And then, again, when we get to the end, you will see, hopefully, that we have the right presentation, the, the, the culmination or bringing together of all these things that I've highlighted and trying to sort of high grade them. So, Winetta, if you wanted to slowly roll through these, and if someone sees something that doesn't look right or is uncomfortable with, again, but you can see how, what I'm doing here.
And Brian, let me suggest that I think what would be helpful for the group is we will make this slide deck available.
Yeah.
And I think rather than trying to scroll through the slides with so much text and trying to capture all that, maybe we should just go to your key takeaways.
I agree, actually. I agree. And, you know, Terry had asked me to do something that I didn't do. And that was take each of the, you know, the presenters and try to, try to hit two or three aha statements or what have you. The reason I wasn't really comfortable doing that was because, you know, each of these presentations are anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half. And it wasn't just the, the individual speaker. It was a lot of discussion and a lot of good points came out of the discussion. And, and it was really, it wasn't really possible or fair, I think, to try to, try to just pick a couple important items because there were, in several, in several instances, there were a lot of items. And I didn't, I didn't want to overlook anything that others may have felt was important. I certainly can go back and, you know, try to narrow some of these.
Brian, I think, Brian, I think this, your, your point is well taken. I think that, that again, how to best use the tool and the work product that you've created. And, and with those, with those, those thoughts in mind, just having this as a resource to bring forward in and of itself is valuable for the group. As again, honor for discussion, for the outline, and so on. So the, but those points are absolutely valid. So, but there's enough on the common themes. I think that we can kind of go through that and, and work through. That's really doing what we were talking about anyway, is, is starting that first sifting process of, of what you pulled out of it. And, and I'm sure that all of us that have sat in on the conversations will have our own thoughts as well.
Yes, absolutely. And that's, that's one thing, one point that I want to reemphasize is, I'm probably missing a great deal. So this is a living document. Let's, 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 you know, collaborate on this. And, you know, I, because I'm, I'm not an expert in food security and I, you know, what might be important to me may not be to others, vice versa. So, yes. So what I did then, Winetta, if you want to just scroll to the next slide as well, so that they can see. So what I did is I broke the, the common themes and I, just, you know, off the top of my head, I think I did economics, infrastructure, legal, and I can't remember what the other one was. Philosophical, and then, yeah, go to the prior slide again. It was economics.
Land.
Yeah. So, yeah. So again, these are just, these are just categories that I invented. We can certainly change them. But, but so for instance, on, in two or three or five different speakers, for instance, in where, where land became, it was part of the subject, I saw these bullets repeatedly, or at least on a number of occasions where, where I felt that they, they might rise to the, you know, discussion, a further discussion. So for lands, basically, what we're talking about is, you know, we had a number of speakers that reemphasized that, you know, we have to be responsible with our lands, identify additional, you know, arable lands, no net loss of lands, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I don't think it's important that I hit each one of these verbally with you, but as you can see, I tried to capture common, you know, common themes.
Yeah. And let me just suggest a process. You want to cover one of the main topic areas, and then let's pause and see if folks have any feedback or suggestions in those areas.
You bet. So you want to start with land?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, starting with the, with the first bullet, we saw this repeatedly, I think, particularly from the Farm Bureau and the Department of Agriculture, where we do have enough land right now for the, you know, current demand of, for current farmer demand, but, you know, for future, future, future use, we're obviously going to have to protect the arable land that is available, identify more, and, and make sure that, you know, farmers, you know, kind of not only get the land, but afford it. So as we move into the economics, for instance, you know, we're talking about logistics, the cost of storage, the difficulty in getting financing for new farms, the, the, you know, the problem associated with having three years of a balance sheet before you can, you know, get a loan from, from the feds. All of these things make the economics, for instance, of farming very difficult. I think I just jumped from land to economics very quickly there. But I don't know, Winetta, do you want me to hit each one of these?
I don't think you need to speak to each subpoint, but if you want to summarize the theme and then maybe open for discussion if there's any, any other point you want to bring.
Well, I, you know, to be honest with you, a lot of these, you know, may, may actually belong in different categories. Some of these may not belong under land or economics. They might belong somewhere else. But, yeah, to, 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 I guess, restate, with regard to land, I think we, I think most of the speakers agree that Alaska has some farming land potential still available. We need to protect it, make sure that it doesn't get, you know, sold for other reasons. We need to make sure that, that we, well, one of the questions, I think, that came up for a couple of folks was, you know, it is the University of Alaska utilizing its, its agricultural sort of history, mining and agricultural history to, to fully, I guess, take advantage of its role as sort of an agricultural university. I don't know if I stated that very well, but, but, you know, is the university utilizing its lands properly? Is the mental health trust utilizing its lands necessarily property is, properly is the state utilizing its lands properly in terms of advancing the cause, I guess, of agriculture? I guess we've found that smaller farming, certainly in Alaska, seems to be more successful. No surprise there. So mention of the, the, a new region that seems to be, to have potential, and that's the Tolchat and Nanana area. There is several, several comments on climate change and the potential impacts of performing and expanding farming or reducing farming.
Brian, we have a question from Kira.
Absolutely.
Hi there. My name's Kyra Wagner. I'm going to
Hi, Kyra.
I am very sad that I've just heard about these conversations. This is really exciting. I appreciate what you're doing. And if I can chip in here, the idea of land management is fascinating in the state. And one of the things that I would encourage you guys to look at if you're talking policy is figuring out how to support. Like, right now, it's so much on a whim. Like, the university doesn't necessarily have a policy as to how much it needs to be doing with its, its lands. The state has a lot of lands, but there's not really a policy as to how much of it needs to be set aside for ag or anything like that. So I just recently had a really wonderful conversation with the guy who does ag leases for the Division of Agriculture. And a lot, a piece of land in my area of the state had a grazing lease on it. And with new perceptions that have been coming down, like you have listed, small scale farming is more successful, they're going to take a large chunk, a section, and break it up into smaller farms and make those ag leases. And that's, this is the same guy who's doing the Nanana project. So one guy's perception in support of agriculture is having a huge impact. But that's a guy, that's a person, he can leave. You know, so if it can get burned into policy more to support the people that do work in those areas, A1.
Yeah. Well, and, and in three slides, there will be, we're going to come to a slide Well, and in three slides, there will be, we're going to come to a slide, and it's called "Policy Suggestions," and I have a big question mark there, because we need, you know, those kinds of concepts to be included, yes, definitely.
And thanks, and we also have a question from Preston.
Quick one, in terms of this category, kind of land and sea, is aquaculture under here in terms of, like, seaweed production? That's something I've seen recently, where we were expanding in this state, and how the lease processes work, and there's a lot of products that can be used globally, and we're perfect for that.
In my opinion, and Terry and Winetta, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when we talk about agriculture, we are definitely talking about aquaculture, mariculture, to the extent that it is part of, you know, the Food Web, Food Network in Alaska, absolutely. It's not, I don't think we specify it so much.
There's some policy issues that are specific to that area, though, so maybe worthy calling out, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is valuable, sure.
And we could ask Julie Decker, who has been co-chairing the State Aquaculture Task Force, they do have a whole set of recommendations, largely looking at it, I mean, it's a food production issue, largely, food production now for, in aquaculture, is focused on internal markets, but there's also a focus to grow for exporting as well.
Yep.
And again, let me reemphasize, this is a living document, we are going to have additional speakers. Some of these bullets will change, or evolve, or become more narrow, so, but we're relying on all of your input to make that happen, so please throw rocks at this.
Hey, Brian, just to summarize, one of the things, I think my big takeaway, whether it be land or sea, or that resource, right, is that we do have scarcity, all land is not created equal. And Ed indicated in a number of our discussions over the last year, that the state does have a mapping program of those areas that are, have the highest capacity or value relative to agriculture. And so, it's making sure that those resources and that knowledge bases is brought forward and is used as a tool as well, so that when we talk about development, and we protect the scarce resource that we do have, because the topsoil layer is not the same everywhere you go.
You're absolutely right, yeah. Yeah, that could be better elucidated, I think. Right? Okay, well, let me jump, move on to economics. I guess the key takeaway here is a lot of laws are not designed for Alaska, for new farmers, you know, so financing is difficult, we have, you know, a small population, so the economics are difficult, we have seasonality, which makes, you know, storage, you know, all of these things make the local growing very expensive, you know, we lack the logistics, particularly logistics close to farming, you know, we don't particularly, we're not particularly a user-friendly state, apparently, for farmers. So, I guess, you know, tried to capture some of that repeating themes with bullets, and one, you know, the last item there, you know, it may sort of look silly sitting there, but, you know, when you look at, you know, the average income in rural Alaska, and the value of local protein like moose to an individual, it's pretty seismic, if you will. Winetta, next slide, unless...
I have one for you on the economics. You know, what we find also, and when we look at how to make the industry more economical and drive the economies of scale, one of the roles that we really need to kind of look at is the role of these market makers that you see in larger agricultural communities in the Pacific Northwest, as an example, where you have larger groups that coordinate the buys and the commitments to the farmers, because right now, what you have is a fragmented production group in all of the, whether it be proteins, or the, you know, produce and so on. And so, the reality is that you need, everybody knows that economies of scale are required to drive and make a sustainable agricultural markets. And so, it's really some of the policy thoughts about how do we do that to drive the economics and sustainability? So, that's really one of the key takeaways that I pulled out as well.
I had, I kind of capture that, I hope, in large market buys beneficial, is that at least an aspect of what we're saying?
It touches on it, but the, it's, those words mean different things to different people, it's really, yeah, but no, it's, but I just wanted to make sure that those concepts are brought forward, thank you.
You bet, you bet. No, I agree with you.
Kyra has a question as well.
Sure, Kyra.
Sorry to jump in again, but one thing that this whole COVID thing has completely expressed about our food system nationwide is the supply chain economic weaknesses. So, when you have a supply chain that is so specific, like, one pig farmer only raises pigs in a certain age stage, and then they ship it up to somebody else, and they ship it to somebody else, if the restaurants stop buying at the end of the supply chain, nobody knows what to do with their section of the supply chain, they always sell to the same people. So, we're plowing under food in California right now, because of the supply chain problem. So, that's one of the beauties of local food, is that you can get your supply chain to your customers so much shorter. So, down here on our end of the peninsula, we have farmers that are selling to restaurants, but they're also selling to the food hub, and they're also selling to CSA customers, and they may also have a farm stand or some outlet like that. So, our farmers are super diversified in their attempts to get their food out into the demand points. That supply and demand issue is huge, there's a plateau where if a farmer can produce enough, there's an economy of scale, they can hit a restaurant, for example, and meet their demand, but the demand is huge. But those little production points sometimes don't match those big, huge demand points. And when you have a situation like this in an emergency, where all of a sudden the demand is gigantic, how do you mobilize all of your little production points? So, that's something to think of.
Yeah, and those are, that's really, really, those are good, very good points, and I would also, to kind of add on to that, please look at this with the lens of COVID on it, because I haven't really tried or attempted to capture what's different now. I mean, post-COVID or during COVID, you know, rules and regulations are changing every day, and I haven't really focused on what's maybe, what's newer, is going to come out as a result of this. Presumably, you know, this, the food security and energy security and various other things, security as a result of COVID is on everyone's minds. And so, you know, there's legislation evolving every day, and I haven't really focused on any of that, where we've got changes ahead, and, you know, what are the, and how do we mitigate?
You know, Brian, as we move on to the next slide, and the point you brought up about how fragile and specialized the industries have become, you know, you see it in everything, right? You see it in poultry, you see it in pork, you know, across the, both at Just in Time, right, and then specialized. And one thing that the COVID example brings, brought to a very clear picture, was the waste that occurs when you have disruption in that supply chain. It was impressive, the stories, you know? In all, whether it be pork, or cattle, or produce, every industry, not only farm workers, right, they couldn't get the resources to harvest, but as well that throughput, and, you know, those animals, they, you know, if, at the end of their cycle, if there's no market for them, or no way to convert that to a long-term shelf-stable product, or into a temperature-controlled environment, it goes to waste. And so, yeah, but anyway.
And you brought up another point the other day, Terry, you were describing, you know, moving human resources around during a COVID event, and you were talking about logistics and trucking, and you just don't have enough long-haul truckers, for instance, you know, if you needed an alternative way of bringing, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I guess my point being is, yeah, there's a lot of unintended consequences to COVID that we're starting to absorb and understand now. I wonder if it's going to provide more direction for us, or more confusion.
Yeah, we'll see.
Coming weeks. Okay, I guess, moving on to the next sort of subject that I came up with is infrastructure. There were several folks that mentioned that a rail connection, for instance, to Port Mac or to Canada could provide improved economics and certainly logistics, particularly since the rail hub or the rail would pass not only through Nanana and the proposed region of development, but also through the Matsui and Delta as well. So, theoretically, additional logistics could improve our economics. There were several folks that reemphasized the issue of storage, and whether that's storage next to farms, or cold storage, you know, near hub communities, there was a lot of question about who would ultimately be available to pay for it. And certainly with the lack of storage, during an emergency, perishables become sort of a luxury item, and we simply don't have any storage to provide for consumers, you know, for an extended period of time, there just isn't, it isn't there. There were, you know, quite a few folks that emphasized the importance of the emerging technologies with hydroponics, and how that could potentially bridge, you know, the winter months for some crops. There were, you know, schools and hospitals and prisons have requested local, you know, local products, but during the wintertime, for instance, when school is in session, you don't have, you know, adequate production, so local growth suffers, if you will. There's certainly things like shared kitchens, community freezers were mentioned, the mobile slaughterhouses that, I think the farm, the gal from, it was the Farm Bureau was talking about, they've got, you know, in Hawaii, they've got mobile slaughterhouses, I think in Alaska, we have a couple, but perhaps additional things like that could help stimulate some agricultural growth. And then, you know, the Fed military plan, you can put just, I guess, other plans, it doesn't have to be Fed military, it's what are the, what will happen if we have a massive, you know, catastrophe? I think one of the speakers, maybe it was Ed, had mentioned that, you know, after speaking with the National Guard, they came to the conclusion that if we had a catastrophe in South Central, instead of putting forward, deploying supplies and resources, they would just helicopter everything from Fort Rich. Well, is that a plan? What if Fort Rich goes down? You know, do we truly understand what would happen in various scenarios? And I don't know that there's a, that we have a sense of that. Moving on, I guess...
Hang on, Brian, we have a question from Preston.
One quick, there was a note in one of your slides previously around poultry, and it was kind of the inspection infrastructure, so we don't have that in this state. And then I know this last year, we had some issues around dairies that were going to close down because we didn't have support for that. So, I think that'll be key for expansion of any of those areas.
You know, you actually brought up a point, I think, I think the fellow from Fish and Game mentioned that they only have three inspectors for all of the international, or I guess, things that come into Alaska, invasive species, you know, are certainly an issue, and they only have three inspectors in the whole state, and it causes delays and various other things, but for such a critical issue, the avoiding of endangered species, are we doing enough?
Well, Brian, just a quick one for Preston on that, the, you know, there are programs, USDA programs that allow for small farm production under exemptions, for poultry, as an example, they can, without having them inspected, you can produce up to 20,000 birds. So, they have, and this is one of the projects that I've worked on over the last few years, trying to do some economic development in the valley. So, the, so some of these, there are exemptions for poultry and slaughter facilities as well, but they're very, as you can well imagine, tightly regulated, but there are small-market accommodations already, those just need to be made. I think the big thing is making sure that people understand them, and then we coordinate them to figure out how we can better use that in Alaska when we don't have the markets that are already there to support the demand.
And can I just add to that, that, and I think this is what Preston was alluding to, is that there are certain critical things, for example, dairy inspectors, and I know David's online, he can probably speak to this more fully, but what I really want to point to is that we get to a critical point where we have one, you know, our bench strength in any one area is one thing, one dairy, one dairy inspector, and that is beyond the tipping point for that particular food source. So, but there was some real critical viewpoints expressed in the legislature about supporting, you know, one last dairy inspector for one last dairy farm, that it was, you know, a business expense as opposed to a public regulatory issue. And so, I do think that that's something that the state is going to have to grapple with, not just in dairy, but that's the one example that I can think of in this past legislature, where there was a real sort of jaundiced viewpoint within the legislature about continuing to support that infrastructure needed for dairy inspection. And I know that that's come up in other areas, for example, and again, David could probably speak to this more knowledgeably than I can, but the meat, the, I can't, there's a meat facility, meat processing facility that's state-regulated, and I see Kyra has her hand raised again.
Another story from the peninsula here, I really appreciate the conversation about critical mass, because when the state stopped subsidizing, Matt Nuska made, and all of the dairies started closing down, one of them did come down to the peninsula and raise cattle down here, but the profit margins are so small that he could not afford to pasteurize, get the pasteurizing equipment, have all of that for it, that was the infrastructure Matt Nuska made. So, then you have one dairy farmer trying to sell raw milk, and the issues around that are complex, and of course, somebody got sick and he ended up closing down. So, then your safety, as things start crumbling, that infrastructure fell, and it was affecting health as well. So, you can see why somebody in the legislature would see that as a business expense, but if you don't support farming in that way, you don't get those profit margins that allow you to have that. And so, that is a vital infrastructure, to be able to get your product certified and healthy, otherwise, you're going to, it's going to start crumbling.
Yeah, and Robbie, with the Food Policy Council and the Farmers Market Association is also commenting about aquaculture testing, which is also a critical piece, which is under DEC, and you have to have your harvest tested within 24 hours before you can harvest. And there's a logistical problem in terms of getting your test samples to... your test samples to DEC and getting responses back that again, there's cutbacks in, you know, all state departments. And that's another area that if you want food production to grow in aquaculture, you have to have the testing capacity to make it possible.
Hey, this is Ed. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I just, I just add to the infrastructure discussion that you, you can almost look at it as a governmental infrastructure need because it's not just testing. Director Shady needs staff to, to sell and lease agricultural land. If, if he doesn't have that staff, then no more ag land gets, gets put out there. So there's, there are food implications throughout state government that, that you need a, a robust governmental infrastructure to, to keep it all going.
Yeah. And, and I couldn't agree with you more, Ed. The second bullet under legal, hopefully endorses that a little bit. Support agencies. And, and again, the legal, legal heading is probably not accurate and it could be legislative or, or what have you. But what I'm trying to capture here is precisely what you're saying, Ed. We, we, we clearly need more legislative support for the agricultural sector. We also, for instance, where, you know, the mention of bypass mail in jeopardy. You know, that was mentioned by Karen McCarthy in her, her presentation. That's, that's, that could, you know, something like bypass mail could have unintended consequences for bringing Alaska grown products, rural Alaska, et cetera, et cetera, for instance, but, but hopefully it's, it's a kind of, kind of falls under what I would, I guess, would call legal or legislative heading. And again, you know, this, this, this heading will probably have several more bullets to it before this, this whole review is done. But, but yeah, please throw rocks at it.
Hey, this is Robbie. One more that I wanted to point out for legal. You have the ease of using SNAP and WIC there at the bottom with farmers markets. I would advocate to expand that to online food platforms as well. So things like food hubs. I know, Carrie, you're probably interested in that as well, but it's been a gray area for USDA to be able to certify food hubs to take SNAP benefits because we're not a brick and mortar, but we're not a farmer's market. So we're in that kind of gray area. And as the pandemic has picked up, I'll just go ahead and say our food hub has seen triple the amount of sales that we've ever had, but we would love to be able to add some equity into our operations and make that available for lower income people. And I do know that Fred Meyer, I believe it is in the state, they're, they're able to take SNAP benefits now. That just happened with the pandemic. So hopefully that serves as a positive case study to be able to expand that to some of our smaller, more local oriented food production ways.
Great.
No, very good. I see it, something, I see a question. Okay, we can come, come back to question. Go ahead, go ahead, go in advance to philosophical unless someone else had a, and again, I, I don't like the heading philosophical, but just for the sake of this conversation, I threw it out there, trying to kind of capture. We, we had several sort of definitions of what is food security? What are, you know, what are our basic rights? Have we, have we, actually, are we, and we hear that the, the lower 48 need the 60 to 90 day supply of, you know, in an, in an emergency and we're, we're, we're happy with five to 10 days. I mean, is, are we happy? I guess is the question. Yeah, you know, one of the, one of the things, I, I don't really like to touch on subsistence, but, but the state indeed does have a constitutional mandate apparently to, to provide food security for the state's human population, regardless of whether you're urban or rural or Alaskan native or not. And I guess this kind of touches on a little bit of that, that subject. You know, quality of calories. You know, if the federal government is, is, is gonna, you know, step in and help rural Alaskans, that's wonderful, but you know, we don't need, the rural Alaskans don't necessarily need grocery stores full of junk food. None of us do. You know, and, and, and so we should foster and encourage local harvesting and local growing and, and local production as much as possible because the calories are going to be healthier and our people are going to be healthier and the ramifications for healthcare costs and all of those things kind of feed into that, that, that heading. And then there was a, quite a few conversations, particularly led by Charlie, whose name, last name is escaping me at the moment, and I apologize, Charlie, if you're listening. But, but the Charter of the Forest and that, and he, 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 he brought this up a number of times, trying to, trying to bring out the conversation of what what our rights are as, as, as Alaskans, as human beings, as you know, I guess, you know, a group of Arctic people that are trying to, trying to, trying to work together, what are our, what are our roles, what are our, our, our rights with regard to Mother Nature and and how we kind of manage, manage game for our own personal use. So. Anyway, yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing that up. This is Tom Harris.
Tom, hey, I, Tom, I should have mentioned your name. I apologize. I've got you captured in summary.
No worries. I, I'm, I'm real anxious that we do not make this a native or non-native, rural or urban issue. We need to go back to our roots as human beings, food security. The very fact that we are using the English language right now goes back to the Charter of the Forest and caring for subsistence. And subsistence is not a native word. It's a, it's a tribal worldwide word. And at the end of the day, we have to come back to the fact that no citizens have access to more wildlife habitat than we do. And of all people on the, in the nation, we should be the most food secure. And we are not. And we have laws in the state and policies in the state that prohibit management of wildlife by citizens. We're the only state in the nation that has this stuff. Right now you can, you know, I'm, I'm, one of the things that brings a smile to my face is seeing your sister holding that king's em. Yet she can never hold that king again in the Kenai River or in Ketchikan where she was born, because that king is no longer there. We will have to go to the Sacramento River to hold that king because they are producing 80 pound kings. Because they allow their citizens the management of wildlife and participate in this. We can solve this problem. You know, we're, we're weeping and moaning about $4 billion in lost revenue from the state for, for oil and gas. The wildlife industry for private citizens in the state of Texas is $13 billion. We can fix this, but only if we open our eyes and see what's really happening. Alaska is isolated from the rest of the lower four world, not just by food security, but by borders, by philosophies. We can't look, look over the fence and see what our neighbors are doing to grow more wildlife. And it is a shame on our generation that this wildlife resources has become so depleted on our watch when more wildlife was harvested within 50 miles of DC than was harvested in all Alaska. I apologize for, for getting emotional about this, but I'm anxious that we, we fix this issue and we can. Alaska used to be a net exporter of meat to the lower 48, not the reverse. And we could do it again. But we have to open up our eyes and, and understand what these issues are. As I have in the past, I've sent you and, and I believe it's part of the record here, a copy of, of what those issues are. And I'm not asking for this wildlife management just for Alaska natives. I've got Scotch, Irish and Italian ancestry as well. And we all need this food. We all need it to, to be able to secure our future. Pandemic or not, the pandemic is making this more, more and more serious. So I encourage the discussion and and I'm hoping that Alaska soon will be able to join the rest of the nation and, and adopt the laws that allow all citizens. Think about the million acres that the University of Alaska has. How much food is it producing? What about the mental house lands? I'm all for the governor giving out more land, but it doesn't mean a thing.
Couldn't agree with you more, Tom. You know, it, it, it definitely does bring, you know, it, it, it causes us all to think quite a bit about about some of the, the conversations, you know, that you've had with us. On the next slide, Winetta, maybe that is the, you know, the place for, again, these are just things that I, these are placeholders. Okay. Please don't read into anything on these, but this is the stage where we, we will try to actually come up with some policy ideas or suggestions. And, and Tom, for instance, the, the conversation that you brought forth with regard to the Charter of the Forest and, you know, human rights with regard to, you know, sustenance. Perhaps that is the place where we could put, you know, we could put that in the philosophical column or you can call it whatever you want, but this is the location where we actually start, I think, to try to identify certain things that, that we can pass along to the legislature and, and others. Is that right, Terry? Do you?
That's.
So again, these are just placeholders. Please let's not, let's not debate what I've got in here for now because this is simply just, like I say, placeholder that I put in. So, but please feel free to discuss.
Um, Terry, let me just jump in for one second. I just want to let everybody know that we have a food policy study group webpage on the CommonwealthNorth.org site. We have archived, it's, there's a tab section and on, there's a tab called references. Under that tab, we have archived all of the prior presentation materials. And, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward with the finalizing the, the study process. I just want to say that I've taken note of a couple of things from this session and prior sessions that it probably would be helpful for the group to have a, a session on aquaculture and other food production opportunities. From the mass feeding session that we had a week or so ago, there was also discussion of USDA food stocks, emergency food stocks, commodity food stocks, and having an understanding about how that process and system works. And then from Brian's presentation, it was also still a question mark around military food, emergency military food sources. And then some of the discussion and some of the chat that's happened today, there was a discussion about how some of the, there, there are apparently barriers, probably regulatory barriers against using some of the, the food assistance programs to access small, small farmer production and how to eliminate some of those barriers. So those, those are things I've taken away from the discussion and I, I guess I'll mine the chat content as well. There were some, a few comments there. And we also have on the list to, especially post-COVID, to get some of the large scale retailers in to talk about what they've learned about adapting to changing demand during, during the pandemic. Because, you know, I think all of us have seen that there were, you know, shifts to different food steps and that the supply chain took a little while to adapt to get more shelf-stable food supplies into the grocery store. And I see Jody, you're quite, your response to on alternative food production about inviting seeds of change to come in and talk about urban food production and hydroponics. We'll, we'll send out an invitation to them as well. So any other thoughts along those lines? We'll also archive Brian's slide, slide deck and from today's presentation, but any other thoughts about other study sessions or speakers that you, you need to hear from. And I think, again, we're pressing for a, a report and a public presentation by November for this effort. So we'll probably have to have some future more roll up our sleeves work sessions and hammer out some wording and some of the content outline for the report. So those, those are my takeaways from a staffing perspective from this session.
Thank you, Winetta. Hey, Winetta, one other thing that I, in this whole discussion that is just now, I think kind of more viable is this plant-based subsidy or plant-based, you know, replacement of meats that we see now that's hitting the mainstream. I just wonder, you know, what that does to this discussion, how it changes, how, you know, if, if there are shelf-stable alternatives on that or, you know, what, but it would be fun to get somebody to speak to that alternative to incorporate some element of that into, into, to support long-term needs.
Okay. So you're talking about like impossible burger, that kind of thing?
Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay, okay. All right.
Um, can I just add a thought?
Please.
Do you hear me? I, I just go back to, I think we started this meeting with, with sort of this conversation, but I still think this group needs to kind of come to terms with what is food security and what we're going to take on in this effort because we could, in my view, we could go one of two ways. We can look at the whole universe. We could identify the problems with food chain interruptions in, in times of disasters. We can identify ways to better manage our, our wildlife as, as, as Tom Harris has said. We can look for ways to increase agricultural production in Alaska or aquaculture. Or we can kind of narrow it down to some, you know, some smaller scope. So I, I think that that's still in my mind an important discussion for this group to have. Otherwise, you know, we have, we, we have the risk of spinning our wheels and, and not really getting anywhere. So again, just, I think keep that in mind. I think this discussion was really good and kind of presenting the universe, but I still think in my mind, we have a key decision to make is how we handle that universe.
There's no question. Yeah. That's really got to be nailed down, I think, in the next week or two.
Yeah.
And Winetta, this is Al.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, on that last slide, that, you know, the last one there was concerning on how we manage wildlife and what we're managing it for. Just for a full disclosure, I am a current member of the Board of Games, so I'm interested in what kind of thoughts the group was having on that? Or if we should have somebody come in and speak about that.
Um, I'll, I'll just throw in real quick, based on your comments, I, I think last week or maybe several weeks ago. My understanding is that, that there are, you were asking about the sort of recovery of, of moose or?
Yeah, the moose and fish are wildlife resources.
Right. Well, sorry, I'm spinning my wheels here trying to find a way to get.
Winetta, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll tell you, the, the, the discussion that we had around that was that Alaska is, manages, manages its wildlife resources different than, say, Texas. We don't allow a, these private game reserves and, and, and for them to have private hunting per se. So. se. So it's, I don't understand all the nuance, but fundamentally, our statute and constitution has a bias against self-regulation, self-development, and how we manage those resources. So there are barriers to development from that respect. And Tom can better offline, we can have a separate discussion about what that means because he's studied it for the last 25, 30 years plus.
Yeah, there's also some discussion going on in the chat here about, I think this is to Ed's point, about, you know, defining food security. You know, the question being, is it storehouses of food or is it a food system that is securely producing and delivering food? I think is part of the question.
And we'll be nailing those down in the two weeks.
Yeah. But I wanted to go back to Al's point. There are actually, I guess, state troopers into the wildlife section have a list of approved or authorized folks that will come out and harvest moose kill, wildlife kill, incidental wildlife kill for going to food banks and/or other... It's not for, it's mostly for institutional feeding, I guess, is how that program works.
Well, that program is very open. It's not limited to nonprofits or charities or food groups or food banks. My experience with it here in Fairbanks is that just about anybody can put their name on the list, families, individuals. And, you know, there's individuals that'll pick it up and redistribute it to other people. So it's not limited to any Pacific organization or entity. It's open for all Alaskans to apply or put their name on. All it is, is put your name on the list in Fairbanks. And, you know, you get that call at 2:00 in the morning and said, you know, we got a vehicle moose accident. Can you come out and get this moose? And so whoever's on top of the list gets the first call and they go down until somebody says yes, we'll go get it.
That's my understanding as well. Also, the Moose Federation was active. I'm not sure how, you know, that they've been struggling in late, but Moose Federation was active in supporting that as well, so.
Okay, we have Jody and then Kyra.
Thanks, Winetta. So just really quickly, the question of transportation. I understand that transportation could fall under infrastructure, but I think that infrastructure is a different term altogether in that if we're looking at specifically at processing, cold storage, freezing storage, that that should be infrastructure. Infrastructure of slaughter facilities, infrastructure of USDA certified slaughter facilities so that that meat can be resold on the market. I think that that's infrastructure. And transportation is a totally different issue. And I didn't see transportation listed. And last week was a great example. The Salvation Army talked about the fact that, you know, now they have food sitting in a warehouse in Anchorage and it can't get out to Bethlehem. So I think that infrastructure, especially now with Raven Air not producing or not flying any longer out to many of our rural communities, especially in the West, I think transportation is a huge issue. And that can also cross into your legislative side because there are lots of supplemented with the mail concept. There's a lot of food that gets out to our rural Alaska communities that's subsidized in its flight. If that disappears because of the mail, we're in a whole lot more trouble than we are right now.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly, certainly separate, say, logistics from infrastructure. You know, because you're right, whether it's, you know, transportation is a major, major, major factor, but so is infrastructure, storage, processing. And they probably do deserve to be, you know, looked at separately, I suppose, to the extent that you can.
And Kyra?
Had to get myself unmuted there. I would just encourage everybody, I love what Tom Harris said about looking at game. Last summer, I was at a food sovereignty conference with the Alaska Tribal Districts, and it was fascinating to me to see how many people's subsistence issues were becoming a problem because of climate change issues. People not able to get out to the berry picking areas because all the permafrost has melted and their four-wheelers are making mud bogs and things like that. So simple infrastructure issues as far as subsistence goes, not being able to get out to the hunting grounds easily, things like that. And so a lot of these tribes were looking at, how can we get a high tunnel? How can we get some local production of food? Like you mentioned, replacing some of that with vegetable production. Anyway, just the idea that ag is a kind of subsistence. It is seasonal. You're growing your food. You are harvesting your food. And so we need to keep that seasonality in mind and the land protection. I mean, there's so many similarities between game management and farm management that it's actually a dynamic conversation that can be seen through a very similar lens. And giving folks food sovereignty, the right to be able to control where your food comes from and how your food is, gets on your table. Get us away from the Safeway culture where we ship and everything. That's the kind of idea that, Ed, that's one definition of food security. So again, like you've been discussing, that definition will become really important because you can't just build a warehouse with 90 days' worth of MREs for everybody. And that's food security, technically. So if you want a functioning food system, I appreciate that you are incorporating the subsistence discussion because that is also a very dynamic and shifting issue.
For sure, thank you.
We're a quarter past nine, Teri.
Yep, I think that's, I think that's great. Brian, thank you so much for your work and bringing those notes forward, just to ground everybody and the topics. And I invite everybody to review the presentation that we're going to put out there online so that we can, again, bring those concepts forward. And the, I believe the recordings are also available if you want to try and figure out, you know, what might have been missed or if there's any nuance in the discussion. As Brian indicated, there was a lot, you know, the absolute presentations, there was a lot of deep discussion that occurred afterwards. So it won't always be found in the actual presentations themselves. So with that, Winetta, what is our next topic and the meeting date and time?
We don't have anything, a topic scheduled right now. I've got a couple of invitations out, so we'll have to announce that at a later date. On the 16th of July, we do have a session scheduled with Carolina Behe with the Inuit Circumpolar Conference. And she'll be talking about food sovereignty from that perspective. And she, we also have Jim Fall with Department of Fish and Game to talk about subsistence and personal harvest, personally used harvests of wildlife, so.
Very good. All right. With that, thank everyone for your participation today, and we look forward to you staying engaged and helping us with the written product. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.